Good to go. Thank. Good? Okay, we're good to go, folks. We'll call the meeting to order at Committee of the Whole on April 22nd. A record of attendance, absent with regrets. Deputy?
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Counselor McLeod, please.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Counselor Cleveland. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. Any declarations of conflict of interest? And you can certainly declare at the time of the agenda item. Okay, we're good there. Of approval of agenda, so I have a couple changes that I'm hoping Counsel will agree to. We have an addition. We'll put five. Where are we under additions? Okay, 10A will be the Modi survey. 10B will be virtual meetings. And I'm also looking to remove 8B, which is committee appointments, because we don't really have enough on there yet. So we can certainly go out and do more work around that one. So just go ahead, CAO.
Just on that, Your Worship, did you want to just keep the agenda item and just have a discussion?
Yep, we can certainly do that. Okay, so we don't have to remove it. So with those additions, does anyone else have any additions or deletions? Good, so can I have a motion to approve the agenda with those two additions? Okay, move by Counselor Dare, second by Counselor Lesser. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, so we have two presentations. And the first one is Waste Check with Gus Green. And how appropriate, Gus, it's Earth Day.
Happy Earth Day!
And we actually planted a red maple out by the bench in Frost Park today. And we're going to try to make that a yearly tradition to...
Is it okay if I remove my mask while I'm up there?
You certainly can, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So welcome.
Thank you, thank you for having me. Again, especially on Earth Day, it's particularly poignant. So, this is actually a presentation I gave at our first Waste Check meeting after the new counselors have given their committee appointments. And it was suggested to me that it might be good as either a refresher or a lesson for the other councils as well. So again, I appreciate you giving me a few minutes of your time today. So we're going to talk about where we are with solid waste, but it's good to look at where you've been. And this is where we were in solid waste in Nova Scotia. Back in the seventies, there were hundreds of disposal sites. In 1989, we were producing 740 kilograms of garbage per person per year. For you Imperial folks, that's over 1,600 pounds for every man, woman, and child. And when, that all started to change in 96 when the province brought in solid waste regulations. But even then, in 1996, there were still 20 open burning dumps in the province. So I mentioned the 96 regulations did a lot of things. Perhaps the most famous one is the deposit refund system. You pay your 10 cent deposit when you buy your can of Pepsi. And when you take your empty can back to Enviro Depot, you get a nickel back. But in over 20 years, that deposit has never changed. And that's significant to municipalities. Because out of the nickel that stays in the system, back when this program came in, 2 and 1/2 cents went to the Enviro Depot for a handling fee. And 2 and 1/2 cents went to divert, or RFB as they're known back then, to fund municipal programs. Fast forward more than 20 years, deposit hasn't changed. But now 4.2 cents of that nickel goes to the Enviro Depot as a handling fee. And 8 tenths of a cent goes back to divert, fund municipal programs. So again, it's just another example of downloading onto municipalities. Something else that the regulations did was create seven different waste management regions in the province of Nova Scotia. We're Region 7. Each one of those regions appoints someone to be a regional chair. For us at Waste Check, the Chair of Waste Check serves as your regional chair. So that would be Warden Gregory from Digby. Lean to Gregory. And that regulations also banned a lot of things from landfill, which was very helpful in getting us to where we are today. So despite my grumbling about divert, they do still provide some funding to our, to the province. I mentioned the Regional Chairs Committee, we're going to talk a little bit more about them. But they get a $43,000 a year budget from divert to pay for their activities. There's $300,000 provincially for regional coordinators, so every region has a regional coordinator. We get about $40,000 of that. There's the education contract, over $700,000. Again, we get about $40,000 of that. Enforcement is a $700,000 a year program. Provincially, our region gets about $80,000 of that funding. There's a little bit of money for household hazardous waste. Our region gets about $20,000 to help cover some of your costs. The big pot of money is diversion credits, which currently is about $4.5 million, of which our region gets about $140,000 a year. In its heyday, we used to see that pot at around $10 million a year. We don't see that anymore. There's another little pot of money, municipal approved programs, we get about $30,000 of that. And then there's one other one that really doesn't have anything to do with divert. It's a dairy stewardship program that was actually negotiated between the regional chairs and the dairy industry, where the dairy industry pays the full cost of recycling all their containers. And that's worth about $30,000 to us each year. So in total, we get about $400,000 from other sources. And then our municipal members contribute $117,000 a year to pay for Waste Check. So the regional chairs, as far as the province is concerned, or at least what they tell us, is they're supposed to be the conduit of all information regarding solid waste from government to all the municipalities in the province. They were established back in 98. Again, they have a chair that's a municipal elected official from each of those regions. Back in pre-COVID days, we used to meet about every six to eight weeks. We don't, we don't do that anymore. But we, we try and stay in touch through Zoom and stuff like that, like everyone else, I guess. And again, it's a liaison group. And then Waste Check, we're the regional solid waste authority. We represent the six municipal units in Yarmouth and Digby County. We too are a liaison between the municipalities in our region and the province. Department of Environment, mostly, but other government agencies and industry as well. And again, we, we kind of provide the solid waste expertise to our individual municipalities, so they don't necessarily have to be experts in all things solid waste. So this is what a typical residential set out looks like in, in our region. Green cart, two blue bags, and a clear bag. Again, I mentioned we represent all the municipal units in Yarmouth and Digby County. We're the smallest region with a population of 42,500 people. So our actual board, each of our six member units appoints two people to serve on that board. And then those 12 officials are who I report to on a regular basis. You have a lot of facilities in the region. Everybody here would be familiar with Yarmouth County Solid Waste Park. But Clare and Digby also have transfer stations. We have a 20-year contract with the municipality of Queens to accept all of our solid waste. Of course, the town has their compost facility. Their household hazardous waste depot is located at all three transfer station sites. And all of our recycling is transferred through those, through those transfer stations to Scotia Recycling in Kentville. So again, there's our office at the airport. Budget information, again, as I mentioned, our total budget's a little over half a million dollars. About $400,000 of that comes through provincial programs. And our member units contribute $117,500. Your exact contribution each year fluctuates slightly, because it's based on a formula of 50% population and 50% uniform assessment. Uniform assessment changes every year. Population numbers change every five years.
That's a really smart way to do that.
He, Mr. Gujio approved it, though. So the idea is trying to, to make efficient use of your money. So instead of you having to have all these different people to deal with solid waste, you have one agency dedicated to solid waste that represents the six municipal units. As I mentioned earlier, clear bag program for garbage, two stream for blue bags, one bag for your fiber and paper products, one for your containers. And a green cart, of course, for your organics. And I mentioned that each municipal unit has their own separate contract for collecting waste. Talk about this occasionally, because I think there could be some savings there if they were ever to tender them as a package as opposed to individual units. Initially, I got some pushback on that, because solid waste is something that municipalities really like to have close control over. And the other issue was, well, we want to protect their local small businesses, which both are valid concerns. But in reality, while there might be a couple of company names floating around, there's really only one collector in Yarmouth County now that has all three contracts. And they also have the contract from municipality of Clare. And there's one contractor in Digby that services the town and municipality of Digby. So again, it's just something to consider in the future. The ICNI sector has to follow the same rules as everyone else. If they're a large generator, they might choose to use dumpsters instead of bags, but they still have to follow the same rules. So some of the services we provide, again, waste, we're your waste experts. We do a lot of educational programs and community outreach. We have enforcement and compliance program with full-time bylaw enforcement officer. We have a compliance inspector. We do a lot of awareness and communication. Community beautification, which is really just a nice way of saying litter pickups, but my staff feels that community beautification sounds better than litter pickups. And of course, we're also responsible for the delivery and repair of green carts. Ah, yes, this brings me back to our pre-COVID days and our hopefully post-vaccination days. Again, back when we used to do event greening and we used to attend festivals and events. We do presentation to community groups, schools, and businesses, which we still do, but now we do them on Zoom and it's not nearly as much fun. We used to participate in parades with our mascot, Mr. Green Bin. And we, we hope to see him back someday when the conditions allow. And of course, we still do business visits and curbside visits. I mentioned enforcement and compliance earlier. We do a lot of work, or Richard does a lot of work, I guess it's fair to say, with illegal dump site inspections and monitoring. He's had great luck with getting illegal dump sites cleaned up by the people who dump them. He's excellent at finding something in there to identify where that waste came from. And if he does, they're going to end up cleaning it up themselves. So he does bylaw enforcement for, for our six regions, in some cases. Some for more municipalities, more for some municipalities than others, but he's there at your disposal if you wish to use him. We do rejection follow-ups if garbage gets rejected. And we track that in our database. If the name of a certain address comes up more than a couple of times, then we're going to go out and knock on the door and talk to them. We do curbside inspections of people's waste, and we also answer to burning complaints. And illegal dumping also includes, if you take your garbage bag and put it in somebody else's commercial dumpster, by the way, people don't necessarily think of that as illegal dumping, but it is, and we investigate that too. A lot of work on awareness and communication. Of course, we have our app. I think everybody in the province has an app now. But I like to remind people that Waste Check was the first solid waste region in the province that had an app for solid waste. We're still averaging about 3,000 phone calls a year on our hotline with people asking questions. We do a lot on social media. I mentioned the community beautification. Of course, we work closely with the Communities in Bloom, the excellent group you guys have here in the town. We help promote and register and organize the litter cleanups. I mentioned the, the green cart delivery and repair. And this is significant, because the bulk of our green carts are over 20 years old now. They rolled out in 1999. A green cart comes with a warranty for 10 years, and, and most of ours are 20 years old. So needless to say, the number of ones that are breaking and needing to be replaced is continuing to increase. Years ago, it would take a couple of years before we would use an entire truckload of green carts. Now we're on averaging, averaging two truckloads of green carts per year. And I know the CAOs knew that, because they see the quarterly invoices for the, for the carts. So that's going to be an ongoing fact of life for a while, I'm afraid. I mentioned social media. We used to, back in the day, do a lot of print advertising, radio advertising. And quite honestly, we don't have the budget for those things anymore. And social media seems to be a very effective way of getting our messages out there. So we use social media quite a bit. We did quite a bit of work over the last couple of years with the town, working on getting green carts, plastic every green carts, or of all of our green carts. And I think we've had some success with that, and we'll continue to do it. There's a couple of provincial programs I just want to mention. Everybody knows about the used tire management program. When you buy new tires, you pay a fee that pays for their end-of-life recycling. As a result of that, if you, you can take four tires and drop them off at any place that sells tires, anytime you're cleaning out your garage, or whatever the case may be. We talked about the beverage container. There's also paint recycling program. If you have leftover paint, take that to your Enviro Depot. There's a used motor oil program now through EUOMA Atlantic, they're called. We've had electronics recycling for a few years now through Electronic Products Recycling Association of Nova Scotia. There's the Call to Recycle, which recycles all cell phones and batteries. And there's also a Safe Sharps program through the Pharmacy Association of Nova Scotia. And that's the overview of who we are and what we do. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you may.
Thank you very much. It's always informative. Anybody have any questions for Gus? Good stuff. We can always find him. Go ahead, CAO.
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. On the Queen's County contract, I don't remember how many years it's been, Gus, but how many years do we have left on that?
It expires March 31st, 2027.
2027, so six more years left on it. Do you have any sense of whether or not Queens will have the capacity to extend that contract another 10 or 20 years?
I think it's going to be a buyer's market. I think there's abundance of landfill capacity in the province. We have seven second-generation landfills. We probably didn't need seven. So I think Queens will be anxious to renew the contract, is my suspicion. But I suspect there will be other offers on the table as well.
Okay. So I was only asking the question, because at the time Queens built their landfill, when these things first were required, they didn't build themselves overnight. And partnerships that were required, if you were going to build one, were difficult. I think we negotiated for about a year...
We did.
...to get it, to get a contract. So just looking ahead and making sure that we don't get caught, it sounds, sounds like it's good for us in six years.
And it's worth noting, it's a very good contract, too. It's 20 years. They pay the, the cost of moving our waste to their facility. And there's no fuel escalation charge in the contract either. So it's an excellent contract we have.
One, oh, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. In your presentation, Gus, you mentioned that in the, in the heyday, there was $10 million in the diversion credit pot, and now it's down to 4.4. Is that diversion credit associated with the revenue stream, like the cans or anything like that? Or is it just a, a number that the province decides they'll put into the program?
No, it's tied directly to the net revenues for divert in any given year. So they're, they only have two sources of revenue. The money they get from their 8 tenths of a cent, and the money they get from the sale of materials. Fortunately, the market for aluminum and PET has been quite good. So that's where they're getting the bulk of their money now. Because let's be honest, 8 tenths of a cent is not really adding up too much. But again, we've, we've asked repeated ministers of environment over the years to look at increasing that fee. Because I don't know of anything else that hasn't increased in the last 20 years. But we're still paying the same fee. And I mean, my Tim Hortons coffee goes up every year, and it doesn't stop me from buying it. I don't think people are going to stop buying cans a pop if the, if the fee goes from, from 10 cents to 12, or 13, or 15, whatever the case may be. Thank you.
Good. Any more questions? Go ahead, Counselor Hatfield.
Hi, Gus, thank you. We've had the green bag program in this area ever since, I think, the beginning of recycling and, and the new garbage pickup. And I know some municipalities have changed to just the clear bag and done away with the green bag. Has there been any discussion or thought about the future in our area with the green bag program?
With the clear bag? We started the clear bag in 2007. We're, it's been very successful. When it was first introduced, we saw a dramatic drop in the volume of garbage. We saw a corresponding increase in volume of organics and blue bag material collected. There's conversations happening about now, about whether or not we still need that black bag. Black bags are a thorn in our side. One of the advantages of clear bag is, back in the times when we had all black and green bags, in order to, to see if people were participating, my staff would have to open bags and, and look in and see what was in them. And that raises a lot of health and safety concerns. With the clear bag, you can look at it and you can see if people are participating in your programs, or if they're not. So we understood, or we understand that when the, the one black bag was allowed, it was because people had concerns that, about privacy. And that people would be upset if they didn't have that one black bag. But we've been doing the clear bag program for a very long time now. And it's, you know, a debate is, is coming around about whether or not we still need that black bag. As far as I'm concerned, there's absolutely no need for it in business, ever, because there's no privacy issues. In fact, there are places where businesses use all clear bags just to make sure they don't have any employee theft, because it's a lot easier to steal stuff in a black bag than sneak it out of the store in a clear bag. So there's really no reason for businesses to be using black bags. But if you talk to the people who operate your transfer stations, they'll tell you black bags are a nightmare, because people come in with pickup trucks full of black bags. And if you go to a lot of commercial dumpsters, it's just black bags and black bags. And there's really no need for it. So I, I think there's going to be a debate about whether or not it's time to, to stop the use of black bags altogether. And just say, if you're going to bring waste to our facilities, it had to be in a clear bag. To address the privacy concerns of our residents, what some jurisdictions do is, they will allow you to have, it used to be either a shopping bag or a kitchen catcher, but shopping bags are kind of scarce these days. So they allow you to put like one kitchen catcher inside your clear bag, if you have some issues that you're concerned about for privacy. So there's going to be a debate about a shift. Should we get away from the black bags altogether? Still allow people to have their privacy by placing one bag inside their clear bag. But it would help us a lot with business and enforcing our programs if there was no black bags at all. And of course, we have, we call it a variance program. We're going to work on that name, because a lot of people don't know what it means. But if there are people who have a legitimate reason why they would need more than one black bag, if they have someone in the house with a medical issue or something, and they have waste that they don't want their neighbors to see, we can, we go and we visit them and make sure that they're participating in our other programs. And if they are, we will issue them what we call a variance. So if you need two black bags, or you need three black bags, then we will let you have that. And we notify the hauler, and the hauler knows as well. So that avenue would still be available. Even if we did away with clear bags for general population use and for business use, there'd still be avenues to protect people's privacy. So I think you will see that debate coming fairly soon.
Thank you. CAO, you good?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, we're good.
Well, thank you very much for your time, and happy Earth Day.
Happy Earth Day. So next, we have the Facade Society, and it's Ms. Bow Hatfield. Welcome.
Take this off, so that my glasses don't steam up, so I can actually see. Good afternoon, Your Worship.
Good afternoon.
Appreciate the opportunity to bring you up to date on what's going on with the Yarmouth Facade Society. At the last annual general meeting, we had a complete turnover in the society board of directors. So we're a brand-new board. And we came on board just in time to begin to implement a brand-new mission. So the previous board did the hard work of organizing the operating principles for a new program, which is our mural grant program. And now it's our responsibility to deliver it. So the new board has spent quite a bit of time, we've met six times in the last six months, to familiarize ourselves with the society's mission and mandate, which is obviously easy to see when you drive down Main Street. The previous board is to be commended, I think, for the vibrancy of the program. And, and, I mean, the results are there for all of us to enjoy. The town has, the downtown has seen a transformation in its exterior. And we want to continue that process, and we also want to add to it. So we did initiate an invitation to, to, for applications for our mural grant program, which concluded the end of January. Knowing that we're in a pandemic, and that it, there are very uncertain times, we, and that we are brand-new, we were hoping and expecting that we would see a slow rollout of this new campaign. So we were delighted to be able to approve two mural projects for this upcoming year. And we, in addition to the mural projects that we have approved, we are aware that there are, there is at least one other business that is in active negotiations with, you know, with artists. And we're in contact with them. We may or may not see an application come from that, but it's really indicative of the interest that's out there. And I believe that there is another property owner who intends to go, to develop a project external to the grant program. They looked at the grant application process, and they kind of decided that it was a little complicated, given what they wanted to do. So, so we hope and we expect that we're going to see some pickup from, from that. And, and the idea here is to create some inspiration. And whether property owners go through us, or come up with their own ideas, the intent is to create public art that inspires, and surprises, and informs, and educates the community. Looking at the, the first of our business partnerships, which is the partnership that, or the, the application that we have approved from 315, 315 Main Street, 13215 Main Street, which is the property that is directly south of the CIBC building. So that's the Ice Works Building. And if any of you who know the area recognize, recognize that there is a, a huge...
There it is.
...facing wall on the north side of that property. So, so the concept that the property owner has come up with marries the, the traditional roots of Yarmouth's shipping industry with his wife's family and connections to China. So as we're all aware, Yarmouth experienced a golden age of sail when it was one of the largest tonnage shipping ports in the world. And, and our sailors literally went from Yarmouth all around the world, including to the Orient, to bring trade to them and to bring trade back. And so the property owner was really interested in finding a way to honor the tradition, that tradition, and also to honor the connections between this community and the Orient, because his wife is, is from the Orient. So that, it, it, I mean, when, when we throw out the ideas, we recognize that the sky's the limit. I mean, someone can, can come up with an idea that's very quixotic and doesn't have anything really to do with, with our heritage or our history. So this first project, signifying as it does not only our roots, but the relationships that we have with the world, is, I mean, it was just, it was, we were, the committee was so excited to see that. And what you're seeing there is really a placeholder. This is not what the, the final concept is going to look like. It was a placeholder that, that attempted to marry both the shipping elements with the mapping kind of elements. And I think that the artist is going to continue to work with the proprietor until they come up with that final design. But, but it gives you an idea. 25 feet by 25 feet is a fairly impressive, a fairly impressive piece of work. So we're excited to see that move forward. And the second proposal, which is just starting, and it's, it's difficult to see, because the mock-up is just, it, it's, it's almost like a coloring book, which will be filled in by the students who are going to become the artists. So this proposal is from the Art Gallery of Nova Scotia's Art Smarts Program. And what a wonderful opportunity it is for us as a community to be able to reach out to the educational community and to our youth, and to bring in the Art Gallery of Nova Scotia in this project. So essentially, the Art Gallery is going to fund this project, and our contributions will help to cite it, to actually get it on the wall, and to perhaps light it if it needs to be lit. I believe that they have final, they are in the process of finalizing details on where it's going to be cited. But I'm, until it's finalized, and until the, the ink is dry on the, on the agreement, I'm not going to discuss that. But we, we do feel that it's going to go forward this summer. And the, the essence of it is that the coordinator of the Art Smart Program, in cooperation with the art teacher at Maple Grove, and a professional artist are going to work with students in the Grade 8 program... and a professional artist are going to work with students in the grade eight program to complete this diagram, this, this schematic of an octopus's garden. And it's, it's an opportunity for the students to work with a professional artist and they will get to see their work profiled on a, on a public space. So it's a win-win for everybody, at least we thought it was. So in the process of, of sort of reconfiguring our focus, because while the Facade Society, the facade grants are still available, if, you know, that is winding down because so many businesses have taken up that opportunity and refurbished their properties. So as we are recalibrating how we can work with, with the downtown to create an aesthetically pleasing environment, we have decided that in addition to the mural program, we are also going to provide some incentive for signage. So that exterior signage that, that people use, especially wayfaring signage that comes out from the, comes out from the building so that people walking up and down the street can see. We, we felt that if the Facade Society had an input, that it might provide an opportunity for businesses to, to go that little extra step further. And so we have approved up to $500 of assistance for signage in the downtown. So that, that, that's just another way of interfacing with the business community and, and providing just that little bit of support so that we can beautify the area. In the process of, of the call for invitations, we received a number of inquiries from artists from as far away as Montreal. So we have an artist, an artist's bank in hand now that we can call upon as businesses begin to show an interest in the mural, the mural program. Because of COVID and the restrictions on travel, we made a decision to keep the artists, you know, sort of local to within Nova Scotia this year. But there's no reason in future years that if there are interested partnerships between business owners and artists, that artists could come from pretty much anywhere and help us paint the town. So that's something for the future to look forward to. And we've also decided that we will, we will initiate our next invitation or, or call for applications by early fall this year so that business owners will have a, a, a good block of time available to them to get their ducks in a row and think about what they might want to do for next year. And again, always recognizing that times are very uncertain and we don't know what next week is going to be, let alone, I mean, we're waiting for an update now from the province, aren't we? So, so we're prepared to allow circumstances to dictate the pace at which we, at which we roll this program out. But I think that, given the, the interest that we've heard from business owners that over time, you're going to see the walls of, of the downtown begin to become a little more colorful than they are now. And if there's anything that I can fill you in on, if you have any questions about the program, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. We're really excited about it and you're right. When it got up and going, you know, the first committee, I mean, the color in the town. And it's, it's not just about color because I always get accused, you know, the mayor thinks paint will fix everything, but you know what it did? It did, it made a big difference. So that first committee got everything off the ground. And we're real, there's so much empty space that can be filled. I think we're going to see things in spots we never even thought about before. So that's what I'm excited about. Thank you for everything you're doing to your entire team. Counselor Lesser first?
Thank you, Bell, for that presentation. Equally as excited about the work that's going to come. The facade program was, as you indicated, was a transformation of the downtown. And seeing projects like this on, you know, big empty spaces, it's, it's going to really bring tourists to the area. And if, you know, in different travels I've done, we've seen like sculpture gardens and mural projects and tourists love to, to look at that. So I'm really excited about the fact that you're able to get two going right away. My only question on, on, I guess the one on the Ice Works Building because of the size, is that, is that a project that will be done on like wood and then mounted or
No.
they're going to be painting it?
It's going to be prepared, the wall will be prepared and it will be painted directly on the wall with scaffolding.
That's really awesome. Okay, thank you for everything.
You're welcome. Counselor Hatfield?
Thank you, Bell. Just a question about signage on these, on these pieces of art, like the ones that are at street level, if there are any at street level, will there be something there to tell folks what that is about? And I'm just thinking of the, under the C one. I'm, I understand that that might be at eye level so that.
I think that it's just traditional signage. So, so there is, there is a, a suggestion that when you, when you develop pedestrian scale, when you're, when you're talking about people walking as opposed to driving by in a car, often businesses really benefit from not just having a sign on the front of the building, but also a sign that comes out. And they're usually quite small, they're not overwhelming. And there are, I'm sure, a lot of bylaws that go into what that looks like in terms of the, you know, the, the size and what's involved. Our, our role in this is really just to act as an incentive for businesses to, you know, to do the work and, and have that little bit of extra so that it's done well.
I guess what I was referring to was the art, the pieces of artwork. So if, would there be, like I think in the one that the children would have involvement in, so would there be some kind, something on that to kind of tell tourists and stuff that this is what this is and?
I don't, I don't think that the, our goal is not as a society to get into a refereeing process in terms of, of reviewing and approving or not approving signage. It, I, I think that we'll be, you know, the, the businesses will be working with the economic development officer. And I think that.
Yeah, okay, good, yeah, thank you. I just think that that would really make it more meaningful and, and be really interesting for folks to be able to read that. Thanks.
Thank you. I think this looks great. I'm really excited for, to see it start. And I really like the idea of getting the students involved. I think that's great, you know, to be able to take some pride in the kind of where you're from and add that in there. So I just wanted to say great job to you and your committee and looking forward to seeing that.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Bell, you, I don't have to tell you that I'm a big fan. But just in regards to the blade signage that you're proposing, it, so I understand that's, that's not meant to replace the signs that are on the front of the building, but just as a compliment to that? And just to comment on that, and I wish I could remember where I was at, but someplace where I saw the blade signs, they didn't actually identify the business, but they had like a, a steaming cup of coffee or a pair of scissors and a comb. It identified what was in the actual building rather than a name. Anyway, just a, just a thought. Anyway, good on you. Thank you.
Any more questions? That was great. We're, we're all excited. Can't wait to see what happens. So thank you for everything and please pass it on.
Well, and thank you for supporting the program. Appreciate it.
Our pleasure on this one. Okay, we are at reports. So staff reports, C A O's report. Did anybody have any questions on that? Okay, I, I have to say this before we, we have a hard stop. It was at 6:15, but it's at 6:00 now. Because we have a couple of people that have to leave at 6:00 and we have a lot of in-camera issues to go through. So we're going to, we're going to pile, we're going to pile through. But, you know, I don't, make sure that you get your questions out. Fire department report. Anybody have any questions there? Is the chief here? No?
Your worship, the chief assumes the position full-time on May the 10th.
That's right. Good. Lots of positive around that. Lots of positive. Go ahead, deputy.
Yeah, so I'd just like to say, I think it's great that we were able to hire someone local and someone that's been around for, you know, with our department for so long. I think that's a great advantage to our town. So congratulations to Mike and to us, I guess.
We're excited. Okay, operational services, Chad's here. Do we have any questions for Chad? Go ahead there, Counselor.
No, just one thing that I wanted to point out publicly is that the recent vandalism, the recent tagging on a couple of occasions in town, as I understand it, cost the town more than $1,000 to have removed. Is that correct? But I think, I think it's very important that the public is aware of that.
Yes, that's correct. And I think since the report, we've received more vandalism within the town. On the streets, actually, not on, not on buildings or other amenities. We've actually had graffiti on the streets, which has been uncommon up to this point. It is, yeah.
Any more questions for Chad? I think we're good. Thanks for everything. Oh, gosh. It's 4:13. Did somebody put that flag up? Did somebody come in? Yep. Oh. Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you. That was at four o'clock. My apologies on that one. Okay, operational planning and economic development. Natalie's here. Do we have any questions for Natalie? Did you want to share anything, Natalie? Are you good or?
I'm good.
Okay. Engineering. Our engineer is here in the back. Any questions for Mark? Okay, covered a lot yesterday in the, in the tour. Finance, Jerry's here. Any questions for finance? We do have budget on the list today. This is a fast one. Yarmouth Recreation. See Frank down back? Any questions for Frank? It's in the bu, it's in the budget. I think we were looking, we were looking for your budget, but I think that might be under budget. Go ahead, C A O.
Yeah, your worship, that was my, my bad. I didn't get the request out to Frank for the budget detail. So I sent an email just earlier this afternoon.
Yep, good.
I'll mix up there. So he'll have that and presumably we'll have the detail as, I don't want to steal Jerry's thunder, but we will probably have to have another meeting after today. And perhaps we can deal with any questions you have then.
Good. Okay. No questions for Frank? Okay, so we're under business. Yarmouth Ferry Terminal Work Package Nine. So under this one, the recommended motion is that it be recommended that council accept the town engineer's recommendation and award Ferry Terminal Work Package Nine to Ryan's Electrical in the amount of $127,972.28 plus H S T. Moved by Counselor Lesser, second by Counselor Hatfield. Any discussion on that?
Question?
Question?
Sorry.
Well, that was very. Question's called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary. Motion carry. Thank you. Committee appointments, did I, no, we didn't remove that. So committee appointments, we don't have, we don't have a whole lot of names. I, I was just going to say that, you know, maybe we need to post on our, on our council sites and see if we can generate some more interest. Sometimes, you know, people don't see everything, so it's important we, we do that. And I know Mike has been doing his job to get the word out there. Go ahead, deputy.
I know during the election, we had 18 people and a lot of those people talked about when they, if they didn't get elected, that they would still kind of be involved and here's your chance. So I know personally myself, I'm going to reach out to a few people who talk that way. And I think if we all maybe do that or, you know, read over the committees and see who it is we think, we all know a few citizens, it might be good. So I think it's important to have that voice there. So the more involved, the better.
Agreed. So anybody want to share anything on that? Do you need anything from us yet?
No, just, your worship, just to your point, I think, you know, we've done, we've done a good job. Mike's done a good job in getting the word out that there are these opportunities for citizens to participate in the process. But oftentimes it takes a more personal approach, a little bit of more personal encouragement for people to consider themselves, to give back to the community in this way. So anything that you, you folks can do as counselors, knowing, you know, not so long ago, you were knocking on doors or engaging with the public around the election, and I'm sure all the time engaging with the public. You may have people who, who come to you or have spoken to you about particular issues or concerns or things they, they hope to see in the community. And here's an opportunity for them to, to influence or inform the council on those things formally through a committee seat, so, or a board seat.
Perfect. We good on this one, everyone? Okay. Operational budget, I guess that's Jerry.
Good afternoon. Just a couple of changes and things that have happened. As, as typical with the budget process, until we actually approve, things will want to be changed on a daily basis as we collect more information or, you know, get new information. The one, the one big thing that happened in the last week is we confirmed, I guess, through correspondence that we had with Housing, Department of Housing, that our budget as presented in draft is probably $80,000 short in what's going to be required. So went through our budget again and made that adjustment. Also confirmed or looked at the library funding and this would be, the library funding request that's in our, in our budget is $56,000. That's a request with a minimum set at 44. So if we knocked it back down to 44, that would be $12,000. That would, we could put towards the $80,000 for housing. Also, one of the bigger things that we also confirmed is that we received a grant to do work on lead laterals through the water utility. And right now you may have noticed a bit of an increase in the payroll budget within the, the public works area. And that's where we have the engineers right now. And so with this grant of $50,000, we can actually move about $50,000 because the grant is basically for labor and a little bit of consulting. So I'm looking at moving $50,000 in wages into the water utility because that would be covered by that grant. So right there, you're looking at $80,000 increase in housing, save 50 in the wages because of the grant that we recently received. And maybe look at reducing the library funding by 12. I've also left in, in the, in the draft, I'd left a little bit of money in for South Centennial School, but probably $3,000 more than needed. I think all that we spent is maybe $1,000 this month on that. So I can strip the rest of that out. So there's about $3,000 there I can pull out of there. And also when I looked in some of the revenue lines, solar power in particular, because it was our first year with solar, we just received notification of our March amount from Nova Scotia Power. So March ended up being about $5,000. So I'm comfortable raising. So I'm comfortable raising the solar power revenue line by the extra $10,000 to take care of the $80,000 in total housing adjustment. So we can do all this kind of, I guess, wiggle room stuff that's based on new information that we have since our last meeting. Just a, just a note, property tax bills were printed this week. Think they're being mailed tomorrow. I know they're been stuffed and stamped and that kind of stuff this week. They're in boxes right now, ready to go to the post office. So with that, that has a kind of a factor, puts a little, a little bit of urgency on the tax grant applications and getting those approved. We would have until the end of May. No interest would accrue on bills until the end of May. But what we have done in the past is when we send the bills out, it's typically, you know, the roughly 10 organizations that get tax grants. So we would, we would send the check basically that would cover their interim bill for them. Because the grants typically cover the interim bill, maybe not all of the final bill. So just a heads up that bills are ready to go out. We'll hold those few bills back for another week or so until hopefully we can meet maybe next week and, you know, kind of firm up final budget numbers and maybe go through or have those tax grants approved. Not necessarily the grants to organizations, but just specifically those 10 or 12 properties that get tax grants.
So even if you, because they don't get 100%, so that interim one wouldn't affect?
Yeah, the interim bill is 60% of last year's bill. So when we, when we, you know, apply the grants, we basically just pay off the interim bills for everybody. And then we hold back the rest of the grant until the final bills go out and give them the balance of the grant at that point.
Okay. All right. Go ahead councillor Dairs.
Just a quick question, Jerry. The recent flurry of activity in the real estate market, will that change the overall assessment in town residential? I mean, does the cap not get removed after a house is sold?
It does. It does.
So do you expect any increase in the tax base?
It won't, it won't happen in this budget year. Our assessments are set as of December 31st.
Okay.
So anything that's, I mean, anything that's been sold and completed by then, they may have assessment value or the cap removed. But, you know, they don't turn around and, and reassess during the year.
Okay. Good days in the future then. Thanks.
Yep, should be better next year.
Go ahead, CAO.
Yeah, could I just, I just want to comment on that because that's, that's something I've recently pulled down some data off of Property Evaluations website. They have a data, data portal. We actually have not seen an increase in the number of sales that's occurring in the town or in fact in the county. What we're seeing is obviously a higher value. Properties are selling at a higher price. I think I, number that I've pulled up is 30% higher above assessment. So it's, it's interesting what's going on. It's, it's a velocity certainly beyond what we expected during COVID. But it's, it kind of matches in terms of the number of transactions of, of previous years. So it, that surprised me because I expected there to be, you know, a significant number more transactions.
Any more questions for Jerry?
Could I speak to a couple of things that he, that he raised?
Absolutely.
So the first one is the $80,000 in additional costs related to housing. So this, this is an issue that we're trying to unpack and understand within our community, but also within our province. So public housing is, is, and the housing cost that we're talking about is a housing transfer that we make and it goes to the, the regional housing authority. And the history behind that has to do with how many of the public housing units in our, in our jurisdiction came to be in the first place. They were, they were constructed under agreements between the province and, and the town. And those agreements, we have, we have many of them. As you can imagine, the number of units that we have in this community. We have many of those agreements. Lindsay's currently working to catalog, to, to, to pull out and catalog all of them. They're not all the same in terms of the, the financial aspects of them, but there's, there's some similarities and some significant differences that we've seen already. They go back, I mean, some of them 50 years. And, and so that's a bit of, bit of work to understand where we are today. So the way, the way it's explained to us is that we, we pay the, the deficit funding for the regional housing authority. So they generate revenues through, through rent. The, and we pay a portion, municipalities pay a portion or a percentage of the, the deficit. The province picks up the balance. That's consistent with, with what we see in some of the agreements and, and not as consistent as what we see in other agreements. And, and what expenses qualify to be included in that, in that deficit varies from agreement to agreement. And so we're, it, it's, it's hard to imagine that all of those agreements are being honored through a single interpretation of how much to send us in a bill when it's not broken down for every agreement. They're all a little different. And of course, it's being run by one big regional agency. So we're trying to unpack that. And our biggest concern is that for the time that, that Jerry and I have been doing, Jerry more than me, doing budgets, that number's always hovered between $180,000 to $210,000. It's always sort of been in that range. For it to suddenly be $280,000, $290,000 is, well, it's a kick in the pants. And it's a sudden kick in the pants. Something has changed, which obviously we haven't seen a flurry of new units being built. So something has changed internal that, that has resulted in that increased cost. And it's not just in our region. Right? So we got to figure this out. AMA is, is working on it. I think NSFM is, is engaged there.
Yeah, I'm on the AMA board too. So that's on the agenda tomorrow.
Yeah, so, you know, we're not working on this alone. It is, it is a bigger issue. But, you know, housing is a transfer that, that goes back many years ago, well, half a dozen or so years ago. It was to be phased out through a, an initiative, an MOU between municipalities and the province. One year, it got down to 50% and the next year it was supposed to be gone. Well, the next year it was put back up to 100% and we've continued to pay. So it's, it's a problem because we don't know why it went to 280, 290. Is it going to be 380, 390 next year? 580, 590? Like, we, we are not engaged in any conversation or consultation around what's happening with that, with that taxpayer money. And so that's obviously what we're trying to unpack there. I also want to talk about the, the library issue. So we got a letter from the regional library and it had two numbers within it, the $56,000 and roughly $44,000. I'm rounding, but those I think are generally the numbers. The library funding formula is changing, but it doesn't come into effect till next year. And so in, in the package that we received this year, they gave us the $44,000, which is the number the current formula would support, and the 56, which is the fun, the for, the funding number that the future formula would support. Obviously hoping that municipalities would, would pay more, be willing to pay more. We missed it in terms of it being a choice in the way that, the, the letter was set up and the way we're used to seeing that, that information come. So that's the basis on which Jerry has made the adjustment. And I can tell you that at a recent CAO's meeting, we went around the table to find out what people, what people's councils were deciding to do with that. Give the extra grant or, or simply honor the formula. And it's a bit of a mixture. There's one or two that are providing the additional grant. Most, let's say about half hadn't yet made a decision and some had decided that it would just be according to the formula. So we are, in, in reducing that number, we are suggesting to you that you honor the formula and, and not voluntarily provide that additional grant.
Good. So they have to send us a letter, a 12-month notice letter for increases. So, so we're not blindsided, right? Like, we don't want Jerry to get a bill a week before our budget. So we would have gotten that, I assume.
That was part of this letter.
Yep. Okay. Anything else for Jerry? So we're gonna meet again next week? Do we want to do that? Yep, go ahead.
So we had asked if there were, if there were questions that arose from your review of the budget documents that you, you let us know. The one question you did ask, we failed to deliver on, so we'll, we'll deal with that. You also have to do your, your grants to organizations and we want, obviously want to complete that process. So, your worship, if a, if a meeting next week around the budget is, is warranted, absolutely. And, you know, we want you to be comfortable and have every opportunity to ask any questions that you want. It's your budget, right? So, yeah, so if there are any questions today, obviously Jerry, Jerry will be able to answer them or take them away and, and get answers. And otherwise, if you want to meet next week, we can, we can have Lindsay arrange that.
Good. Are we okay with that, council? What's your wishes? Next week's good?
Okay.
Okay, we're good for next week. So Lindsay, you can set something up there. Thanks, Jerry. Waste receptacles report. So we did have some discussion on that the last time. So the recommended motion is to recommend that staff perform an assessment of the 59 waste receptacles currently in use to determine if some of the existing receptacles can be relocated or redistributed to underserviced areas. So there was a, we had a conversation about that. Did you want to share some of that or you, do you remember?
We have lots of conversations. So, so after the, I mean, Chad and I and Todd and I have talked different times about the, the amount of effort that goes into managing that part of our, of our parks, park staff work. And it, it is, it is fairly significant when you look at, at Chad's report. And, you know, but it is, it is part of the business. If you're in the business of, of parks and green spaces and so on, you're also going to be in, in the business of providing waste receptacles. At least that's, that's a pretty traditional thing. And, and obviously, it's important to have, have some waste receptacles because, you know, litter happens or, or garbage happens and it's nice to have a convenient place to put it. But as I said to you, your worship, and is, is that if I'm, if I'm, it doesn't matter where I am. If I have a coffee cup, which I sometimes do, that coffee cup is in no way ever going to find its way to the ground. It's going to find its way to a waste receptacle. It's going to stay in my hand until, until there's a proper place to dispose of it. That sadly is, is not obviously the case for everyone, or we would not have a litter issue. Other than, I will say, some of our litter does come from unintentional spread of, of stuff. So a garbage bag gets blown into the street and hit by a car overnight, stuff goes everywhere. It becomes litter. Something inadvertently flies, you know, out of your hand or off your, out of your vehicle or what have you. Sometimes that happens. But I think a lot of the litter that we experience is, is just careless disregard for, for the public spaces and people disposing of things and leaving it on the taxpayer to, to worry about cleaning it up later. And this is an indication of the kind of cost and effort that goes into that. I think Chad's recommendation is, is a good one because maybe there, you know, from their experience, there may be places where, you know, the cans or the containers are not well-used and other places where there seems to be some demand.
Good. All right. So that's, that's the motion. Did anybody who wants to make, go ahead there councillor. Cleveland?
Well, first off, I'll make the motion. I do want to add to what he says. It's, it's Earth Day and I've, I've had this conversation more than once, actually even today, on the air about the fact that as I walk the streets, and I've been walking the streets quite a bit lately, thanks to that Yarmouth to Yarmouth thing, there is a lot of garbage out there. It's, it's more garbage out there than I've ever seen. And I've paid a lot of attention to garbage over the past few years. And one of the first things that happened when I first became a councillor five years ago was I became part of the Communities in Bloom group. And since then, you, you pay attention.
Oh, yeah.
You really do. You watch. And there's always been garbage. But there's more of it and I really don't understand it. And the one thing that came to my mind, and it is, it's a great exercise to do this, to assess and decide where they should be. But I have to throw in the fact that I have seen people throw stuff next to a receptacle. And it is the most frustrating thing. And I have no idea how you change people's minds or you create that kind of, a situation where it's frowned upon in a way that everybody kind of frowns upon it. It's become so commonplace that it's become very frustrating. And I think we need, we need more social media, I know. And it's probably not going to matter much. But I do make the motion and I, I hope that, that something good comes of this. Because I think everyone needs to be aware that it's just plain disrespectful to be tossing everything everywhere. Thank you.
You're, you're welcome. Go ahead councillor Dairs.
Yeah, I'll second the motion. Just a comment. When I was out in Alberta a few years ago, and Alberta does a, a really good job of litter abatement. And in discussions with people out there, they, one of the things that I found is that by engaging the youth, so they have their litter high, their highway pickup, they hired youth groups or they pay so much per kilometer for a youth group or a church group or somebody to go and clean up the highway. The dividends that were experienced was that the youth were taking pride in the fact that they were cleaning up. And the spin-off is that now when dad wants to throw the coffee cup out the window, little Johnny in the backseat says, uh-uh, it's not happening. So the youth actually ended up influencing the elder generation. And I think some of the, the elders, the elderly people that are doing it, because you can't find anybody that's ever going to admit it, they threw their coffee cup out the window. Nobody admits it, but it's being done. But they found that the, the most influential group was the youth. And so maybe we could look at that for the future and see if there's any way we can get a little more active in, in generating enthusiasm amongst the youth and let them pass the message on.
Agreed.
But I will second the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead there deputy.
I agree 100% with councillor Dairs. It's actually where I was going. I work at the high school and I'm sure Mr. or councillor Lesser can also say, we, we see garbage 10 feet away from the receptacles many times. But there are those kids that actually get out there and, you know, clean up and make sure others do. And I've seen on social media a lot about, you know, maybe we should hire people to do this or more garbage cans or put in cameras. And my, my response always is if we don't throw it there, we don't have to pick it up. So why are we talking about fixing a problem? We should be talking about not making it a problem to begin with. So I do think it starts with our youth and I do think we all have a responsibility. And once again, to what councillor Dare said, if you're driving around in your car throwing coffee cups and cigarettes out and you're saying, look at these youth, you know, littering up our subway trail, well, where did it start? They learned it from somewhere. So I think we all play a little bit of responsibility in that. And, you know, maybe we've got a little lazy on calling people out when we see it. But if we all do our jobs and, you know, it's, it's not other people's jobs to pick up for us. If, if we all pick up after ourselves, the problem takes care of itself. So I think we need to all put a little bit back on ourself. And I think the youth idea is, is great too. So maybe that's something we could do through the schools or work with the, the center and see what could be done, so.
Good stuff. So motions on the floor. Any more discussion? We need Jim. Questions called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary. Motion carried. Yarmouth Food Bank Society. Okay, so this is a big discussion. CAO, we just hit the food bank item. So they want to purchase the site.
So your worship, last week, one of the members of the Food Bank Society asked to come and see me. They did. Expressed that they have a five-year lease on that, on that building. They're in their last year. They would prefer to purchase the building from the town and own it outright. Or if that wasn't possible, enter into a lease. And so you received this correspondence to formalize that, that request.
Okay, let's talk because there's some issues.
Your worship, around the issues, maybe I can start. We've had a history with that location and that activity with one of the names. We've had a history with that location and that activity with one of the neighbors to the property objecting to the use and feeling that, that it was, it wasn't, it wasn't a welcome development for, for one of the neighbors. And so, Council has talked about in the past erecting a fence, a high fence to shield the view of the activity. And the activity being the lining up and, and waiting of people outdoors 12 months of the year, or something like that, waiting to get, to get food and how disheartening or disturbing that is to have to look out and, and feel for those people. And Your Worship, you and I have talked about, you know, the fact that this does in fact occur, that, that in that location, you know, people do wait, line up for quite a while to get their, their food. And it is outdoors, in, in the elements. The Food Bank Society's approached the town in the past to extend that building, to add on to it because the, the size of the space inside, they didn't feel was adequate for their needs for storage of food and sorting and distribution. So, they had asked at one point to actually build on to the building. Council of the day didn't agree with that, didn't agree to do that. They were accommodated originally in that building as a result of a, a deteriorating relationship with the new owners of their previous location. And they came to us in a bit of a bind and they had identified that building and Council had agreed to the five-year lease as a result of that discussion. So, I don't know if I have anything else to say, Your Worship, but that's some of the background.
Wish it was just in a more suitable place. Go ahead, Counselor Hatfield.
What, what are the, the lease agreements attached to that at the present time from a financial perspective?
We, we actually collected all of our rent upfront, dollar per year. And so, we had a $5 bill to deposit. So, it was very much a, a gift from the town. Now, be, keep in mind that the building condition at the time they took, they took, signed the lease, it did need some improvement. It was, it was essentially a shell with an old furnace, which I suspect is not the source of heat that they're using. So, they probably replaced that, I'm guessing with heat pumps, to, to set the building up better. Yeah, so it was just, it was $5, dollar a year.
So, do we have to decide this now?
You, you have, you're in the last year of a lease, so you'll need to make a decision about your intention sometime in the months ahead. You don't need to make a decision right now, obviously, given we have a year. But it is, it is now officially on your radar and we will have to deal with it. I would say one other thing, Your Worship, that I left out of this is that a couple of years ago, Council of the day felt that the, because of the, the issues that were occurring or, you know, complaints we were receiving about the current location on Herbert Street, Council had offered to accommodate the food bank at the former South Centennial School in the back wing of that building, using several of the classrooms or the gymnasium space, whatever was required. The Food Bank Society did not see that as, as a desirable move for them and so they've remained at the, at the current location. I only raised that because, to, to, I guess, provide some background in terms of previous Council's intention or thought was that there was a better location at that time, but obviously they didn't come to an agreement with the society.
Okay, Deputy?
I think it would be good to invite him in, just to have a meeting. I think sometimes if you can ask these questions directly and, you know, it's easier than making a decision based on maybe what we think or assume. So, it might, might be more informed if we, we can do that and just have a meeting and go from there. At least that's my opinion.
Go ahead, Counselor Lassiter.
I think I'm going to struggle with this one because food security is something that obviously I don't have a problem with, but I've seen around town and the location, I know I'm not, I'm not the expert because I don't volunteer with the food bank, but the location to me seems like it would be better suited where there's more need. And we often hear of people that just can't get to the food bank. I know recently the food bank has set up the ability to, like, people can volunteer and deliver, which is good, but it sounds to me like they, the operators of the food bank or the volunteers must think it's a, a good location and they're, they're meeting the need. But I struggle a little bit with the location and talk to people that find it very difficult to, to make their way there.
Go ahead, Counselor Dairs.
Yeah, I guess I'm just having a, a bit of a hard time telling somebody else what's good for them. You know, they've operated the food bank for many years and they think that's their location's suitable. I, I'm not sure we should be telling them that it's not. I've drive by there and I think, you know, it's, it may be an inconvenience for somebody, but it's only an inconvenience for a few hours a week on, every Tuesday, and I don't think it operates through the summer months. So, it's not like it's a huge imposition when you, you think of the benefits of people accessing much-needed nourishment. So, I, I'm reluctant to weigh in any further than that. I would support them operating out of that facility.
Yeah, that, I'm going to echo what Counselor Dairs just said. I don't think we're being asked to decide where they would be operating from. I think we're being asked to decide whether we want to sell the building to them. They obviously have already decided that it works for them, or they wouldn't be proposing to, to purchase it. So, I think our, our consideration is whether we want to sell or not to sell. That's my take on it, not to, not as to whether they should be operating there or not.
Okay, so are we good to ponder on this one and come back at another time? Is that okay? Anybody disagree with that? Yeah, okay. Thank you, folks. Marketing levy participation agreement?
Your Worship? Your Worship, the Acadia First Nation has erected a hotel on banned land. True Hotel, it's operating, it's, it's quite nice. They're, they're aware that we have a marketing promotions levy in the town and the District of Yarmouth. And they recognize the value of, of that levy in terms of what it can do, in terms of supporting the tourism industry, of which they're, they're a part. And they would like to participate in it and, and collect it and, and remit it in the same way, a similar way, to, to the properties that, that currently participate. And all the properties that currently participate are within the town of Yarmouth. You have to have 20 rooms or more for offer. And so, I think we've got four properties currently operating that are collecting and remitting. They'd like to be a fifth, but because they're not subject to, to municipal bylaws, they've proposed a, an agreement. Do, do you have received the agreement, Lindsay? Yeah, so you received the agreement, the draft agreement in your email. It's not here in the, in the public agenda today because it has been, it is, it is a rec, an agreement that I am recommending to you. But if you did not accept that agreement or wanted amendment to it, then it is in the context of a negotiation. So, so if there were things within the agreement that you want to change, then, then we're still negotiating. I'm saying this is a tentative agreement. If, if you're okay, if you've reviewed it and you're okay, it would be appropriate to make a motion to recommend the agreement to Council. If you've reviewed the agreement and you have questions, or you would like to propose changes to it, then we should defer this item to the in-camera portion of the meeting and discuss with it there because it would be a negotiation.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Council, what are our thoughts? I didn't see anything that concerned me. Did you see something that concerned you?
So, Your Worship, the, the negotiation was facilitated by Neil McKenzie, our, our Tourism Association manager. And he gave me the opportunity to comment on drafts and was reviewed by Greg. And I'm satisfied with the agreement. They were very responsive to a couple of concerns that I, that I had. I think right now, given what's in there, I think it's fair and I'm recommending it to you.
Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Cleveland.
Your Worship, as part of YASTA, and they have been for quite a while now, I've been watching this very closely because it's, it's kind of crucial to have this property as part of M Plaque. We really would like to have them there. I think that they have a very valid voice, they, they certainly have the size, and I was very excited that they were willing to work with us to get this together. I, I looked it over and I'm, I'm more than willing to support it personally, if you want me to make a motion. But I'm, if anybody has any concerns, I have no problem with that as well. But for me, this, this is a good agreement.
That's what I saw. Go ahead, Deputy.
I agree with Counselor Cleveland. I think it's great. And once again, any partnership we can have with AFN, I think that's a step in the right direction to both support them and bring them in, as you know, part of what we do. So, I'm with Counselor Cleveland. If, if there's no objection, I'm ready to, to make a motion and pass that if we can.
So, did you make the motion? Did you just second it? Okay, Counselor Dairs? Oh, wait a minute now.
Please, I don't need an interview session.
One second, sorry. Go ahead, Counselor.
I had a chance to look at it as well and it looks great. I'm actually excited the fact that they want to be partners with us and, you know, we have, it was brought up in the debate during the election that we have three municipalities and that we're, you know, we're missing one other entity, which, you know, I, I think that's important, that we have the First Nations community here that we want to partner with. And they've built an exceptional hotel that they would like to be able to give back. I know I've benefited through coaching myself through the levy and it's a great program and I'm, I'm excited with the agreement, the way it's written. And I would support the motion as well.
Thank you. Gil, did you, were you good? You didn't have your light on, that's why I couldn't.
No, I just, no, my, my only comment is I don't require any further discussion of this, I think it's great.
Yeah, I, I agree as well. It's really good to have that partnership. Okay, questions called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary, motion carried, correspondence?
So, Your Worship, just, just for clarity, so the, the agreement as recommended now will show up on the Council agenda and it will be public.
Yes.
So, I just want to be clear that it wasn't public today because I wasn't sure if we were going to continue to negotiate.
Yep, perfect, thank you. Okay, so correspondence, so do we go, do we need to go through these? Because they're not business. Okay, high school, prom?
Your Worship, this is a, essentially a request for a grant to go towards the cost of utilizing Mariner Center for a prom event. And, you know, there are people here better, better, with more knowledge about the current school situation and proms than I have. But it, it seems like the, the, any event to celebrate the graduation has to be external or, or disconnected from the school itself. And, and so, a group of parents, families are, are, it looks like trying to provide a special moment or a special evening for, for their, their graduates.
Okay. Counselor Berry?
I guess, one of my concerns is there isn't a budget included. I understand that sometimes, you know, things are, work, works in motion and, you know, crunch time comes and a couple of people who work at the school here, we know how it is. But I think before I'd be comfortable giving money, I'd want to know what the overall cost was. And kudos to the parents and the community who always step up to do these kind of things. I'm also not overly comfortable that the check will be written to a business as opposed to maybe just people doing things or whatnot. And that, that's just a few of my concerns. I mean, once again, big supporter, anything we can do for our youth, but I think this needs to be polished up a little bit before I could just say yes, here's some money.
Okay, anyone else? Because we can certainly just receive and place on file if that's what you want to They did graduation during COVID at the Mariner Center, outside, right? When, when was the one that was outside?
So, we did do the community grad parade where they walked through last year and whatnot at the Mariner Center. But the graduation itself, every student was given 10, a 10-minute slot. You showed up at the high school with your family, you walked through, and that's one-on-one kind of was how it was done last year.
So, so that's all-inclusive?
Yeah, and same with safe grad, I'm a little biased.
But the prom isn't?
Well, that, that's another thing that, that's somewhat, I understand it's, some people see it as a rite of passage, but sometimes the cost of $2,000 dresses and, you know, $500 tuxes and, and whatnot, I already make it out of reach.
Yeah, it does.
You know, we all want fairy tale things for our kids, but this, from what I'm hearing, the budget is very, very high for this. And, you know, if you want the great stuff, sometimes you have to pay for it. But, you know, it, it isn't all inclusive, there is a group of students that wouldn't be able to take part in this regardless of, unless it was 100% free. So, once again, that's just a, another thing that's there, just for us to consider if we're being, you know, cognizant of everybody.
Yeah, I agree. Go ahead, Counselor Dairs.
My guess is that the new COVID restrictions that were imposed this afternoon will likely make this a moot point, any, at any rate.
I agree.
But I would like to at least, rather than be received and placed on file, at least respond to the correspondence.
Yep. Okay, thank you, Counselor Hatfield.
Yeah, I, I think it may be, the COVID may be restricting this, but, and I'm also looking at some of the costs that they're saying that they will be incurring and many of them would be costs incurred by a non-COVID prom. You know, your DJ, your refreshments, your decorations, your security would all be provided by the school in whatever manner anyway. So, I think it's important to look at what their actual increased costs would be and what would actually already be covered or should have been covered by the school, would they wouldn't be coming to the town for a donation for that. So, just a point.
Thank you. Counselor Lesser?
I think I agree with Deputy that it is, the money is, it looks like it's going to a business versus the organizing committee. One other concern I have, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure how that works, but I know the school system, the Department of Education and, and the school board can't be involved in organizing the prom because of liability if somebody were to contract COVID or the chaperoning part of it, when it's a school event, it's chaperoned and, you know, when they leave, when they leave the prom and move on to the next, you know, prom party or whatever happens, you know, they're leaving in a safe manner. I know there's some liability with the Department of Education and, and school board getting involved and I don't know if that same kind of liability would, would be there on the town if we contributed financially or if contributing financially, it wouldn't have the stipulation that we're, that we're responsible for the liability. I'm not sure if, I don't know, that's one question I would have. But I, I think if, you know, we found that more information as to what they were actually looking for, it might be, you know, I, I think it's probably better to go to the organizing committee as opposed to a business and without knowing the budget, it's, it's pretty hard to make a decision.
Okay, so where are we, folks? Like, Counselor Dairs has suggested that we, you know, we respond, which we, which, you know, that's appropriate. Anybody, is anybody interested in doing this? Let me ask that. Okay. All right, so a motion to respond to, we're going to send a letter, Jeff, to, to say that we won't be funding this. Is that appropriate? Is that an appropriate, what's the appropriate motion?
So, I'm trying to think of how I word that letter. The letter was tabled at this, at this committee, the whole meeting, and there was no recommendation to Council?
Yes.
Okay. I can handle that.
Okay, all right. Do I need a motion? No. No, okay. All right, are we okay with that, folks?
We didn't want to grab a meeting.
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, we had, there was- Yeah, well, I mean, you know, we had, there was valid concerns, right? It's not because we don't care about the kids like everybody said we do. Okay, Municipality of Argyle, Mariner Center extension. So I think that's just a point of information.
Yeah, that is information. So they are not an owner, they are a funder and the agreement had expired. But they have made a decision to continue to participate. One-third of the operating support necessary. So that's a very welcome decision on behalf of the Municipality of Argyle.
Good. And the next one is the airport funding extension, same thing.
Right, well, we are all owners of the airport. And we had made a similar decision back in, I think, March, Lindsay. And so they're just confirming they made the same decision, which is, which is great.
Yep. Okay, so, all right, so we are at additions and we have two, we have two additions. So let's go to, let's go to 10B first, which is because the other one might take some time. So the virtual meetings. And Counselor Lesser was just asking, you know, should we consider that now? So I said we'll put it on the floor for discussion. Go ahead, Counselor.
Yeah, I'm not, I actually like the in-person meetings and I think we've managed to keep our distance. I'm just, with the numbers rising each day and then the announcement that happened at 3:30 today of Halifax being shut down for four weeks, it's, it seems almost inevitable that it may come to our area, which I hate to say, it hasn't been here yet. But I think, you know, there were a lot of, a lot of people in the Yarmouth community that were in Halifax this past weekend. And if it makes its way here, I just, I just want to make sure we're doing the proper thing and showing good leadership. If, you know, if the time comes that our number, we start getting COVID in the community, that we're ready to move on to that.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Dares? Whoops, wait a minute now.
Yeah, I saw your email earlier today and the response of the mayor. And I'm quite confident allowing the CIO to make that call. So I think Jeff has been very diligent in enforcing the rules here at the town hall. So I'd be happy following his direction on that.
I can tell you diligent is an understatement. This is what he does when I walk into his office. So everybody keeps their six feet. You know, we've had lines drawn on the offices, we've worn masks in and out. And Jeff, thank you for that. You've kept us safe and that's really, really important. So I think you're keeping us safe and not trying to keep me out of your office. That's just, that's just the added bonus. Deputy?
Yeah, great job. I mean, just look around the room, actually, and, you know, what we had to do to kind of get back. And to Mr., Derek, to Counselor Lesser's point, I do enjoy being here more. I find it's better. There's nothing like kind of face-to-face. But I remember pre-COVID, we were out in front of it quite a bit. And we actually had made a motion to start meeting before it was even mandated. So kudos to our staff for making, you know, making sure we're ahead of that. And I'm sure we will be if that decision will be made when we have to. So.
Counselor Dares and then Counselor, and then the CIO?
No, I just wanted to say, Derek, it was great that you brought it to the attention. I appreciate that. Thank you.
CIO?
So, your worship, I think this is what I would, the way I'll probably react and I'll reserve the right to change my reaction. But the first and foremost, it's your meeting, right? And if you're comfortable meeting, if you're, well, put it the other way. If you're not comfortable meeting in person, then we can accommodate that. We can, we have the equipment and the ability to have virtual meetings. So if counselors are not comfortable, I think you just let me know. I'll have a discussion with the mayor and we'll do, we'll do what's necessary to have an effective council meeting and keep you comfortable fulfilling your role. Second part is the presence of confirmed cases within our health district. And by that, I mean the tri-county. So we're able to monitor that on a day-to-day basis on the provincial website whether there's any confirmed cases in the tri-counties. If there were cases, and there aren't presently, we've had, we've had what I call onesies. We've had, you know, single cases, total of four through the entire pandemic to this point. If we have cases confirmed in the next few days as a result of the outbreak that's happening in Halifax and caused their restrictions, two things will happen. One is I'll talk to the mayor and perhaps we will consider more restrictions for this building and perhaps around these council meetings. The other thing, of course, is we're not the ultimate authority on this. The province is. And if they mandate that we, that we, you know, close the building or close the meetings down or don't gather in groups of more than five, then that will obviously lead to the requirement to meet virtually. So we'll just go by feel and keep a very close eye on what's happening. But I want to emphasize that if you folks are not comfortable having this meeting in person, then let myself or the mayor know and we can very quickly flip the switch and move to virtual.
Are we good on that one? That's, that's good? Yep. Glad you brought that up too. Thank you. Okay, so we are at five after five. Okay, okay, so the next one is the survey. And I want to see what council's wishes are. We all have a copy of the survey that was sent out by Modi. Go ahead, CIO.
Your worship, I think it warns a little bit of introduction. So a couple of weeks ago, at one of our CIO meetings, it was a virtual meeting, the CIO of the municipality of the District of Yarmouth indicated that her council would be doing some form of survey. It was not apparent to me nor my colleague in Argyle that that activity would spill beyond the municipal boundaries into the town of Yarmouth in Argyle. Until Saturday this past, my colleague actually in Argyle did receive a call at his home. And I think his wife completed the survey. But he texted me immediately, or I think immediately, anyway, sometime on Saturday to tell me this. And I immediately got in contact with the CIO from the District of Yarmouth, who had indicated on Monday she would provide me with these questions. And so that's how we, how we have the survey, is they have provided that. However, we weren't, I wasn't given anything to inform you as councilman. I apologize for that on Saturday to give you any kind of context in terms of what this was about and what you should tell the public if they receive calls. So apologize that you were left in that situation. I also understand that the staff member of Mariner Center received a call or two at his home and was confused because he works there and wasn't aware. Assumed that it might even be a spam call or a prank call. And turns out the general manager wasn't aware and so our CEO. So there was a little bit of confusion about it, but the survey is continuing. I know as recently as last night, I was aware of a, of a call that was made or received. So they're completing, as it says, 400, 400-person sample is what they're looking for with the survey. So that's just a way of introduction, worship.
So just so you're aware, I did reach out to council because I didn't want any of the council members to see it on Facebook and, or social media and ask, what's this all about? So I didn't have the questions and I had a couple of them, but I passed that on immediately. So until we could get our hands on the rest of the questions. Counselor Lesser? Oh, CIO, go ahead.
Can I just interject with one other thing? Is that this part of the discussion that we're having in public is about the survey itself and what is in the survey. There's another discussion that, and some emotion perhaps around how this came to be and that, you know, there's some Facebook chatter about that. I think if we're going to talk about that, I think that that's a discussion better held in camera. And because it involves our neighbors, our partners, it involves both council and staff. And I think it would be inappropriate to get into the details of that discussion in a public forum out of respect for our neighbors.
Absolutely. I agree. Go ahead, Counselor Lesser.
I think I'll hold my comments after then.
Yeah, yeah, we're all going to have to hold on to our tongues just a little bit on this one or a lot. So go ahead, deputy. I'll tell you the process, what I think the process should be.
I'm glad you mentioned that because I think there's some people that are fired up, me being one of them. And I'd rather talk respectfully when we can about these things. But I will say I've seen these questions before. And I can ask you with five pens in my hand, which pen you like? Or I can say, you don't like this pen, do you? A lot of these questions are a little bit. I'll keep it at that.
So this is, and we don't have to do this, but this is what we're thinking. Maybe go through the questions and share our thoughts on the questions? Are we okay with that? I don't want anybody to be uncomfortable, but some of these questions are.
I guess I would say, your worship, if we're, if we're going to have a productive discussion about the survey, you know, it's one thing to, I mean, we can do it two ways, I guess. Is we can state our concerns and those can be noted. And we can share those with our, with our municipal partner or neighbor.
Yes.
And there may be questions that arise. And you, when you read the questions, there may be things that come to mind that you don't understand that you would like a response to. We can also note those questions. And we can compile that and, and under your signature, send it to the municipality for response or for comment.
Okay, thank you. That works. Is everybody okay with that? Okay, and Lindsay, you're just, you're going to keep track of what our responses are. Okay, so 2021 citizen survey, it says Municipality of Yarmouth on the top. Everybody has that in front of them. So the first question, not the question, but the first point of concern is survey population and sample source. It says residents of the District of Yarmouth, the District of Argyle and the Town of Yarmouth, aged 18 years or older. So I'll start and that'll get the ball rolling. I have never, ever seen a municipal unit that I've heard of cross the boundary of another unit and poll their people. So my concern with this one is that they actually reached out to people in the Town of Yarmouth. Argyle can speak for themselves, but for the Town of Yarmouth, they stepped over the boundary line. They polled our people. And as our CIO mentioned, it was just, it was just mentioned in brief that they were going to do a survey. And I think I can speak for our CIO and you can jump in, Jeff. But if, if it had been mentioned at all that it was going to be polling in the Town of Yarmouth, you would have responded.
If I'd understood that there was a, if I'd understood, and I don't think this was the case, that this was an overture to do a collaborative gathering of opinion on the project, I would have come to council. I assume there was a cost associated with it. I would have come to council to see if you wanted to do that. Because as we, you know, sorry, I'm going to speak for a second.
Yeah, please.
We have a, an online platform, Get Involved Yarmouth, that we have used to collect public opinion on some projects as we, as we've done them in the past. But we don't do that as staff without first bringing it to you because it is your job to bring that public, the values and the opinions of the public to the recommendations that staff bring to you as professionals and as experts. So not that, the professionals and the experts aren't always right in the time and context. And so it does, that's how the system works, is that you as counselors apply the time and the place and the values of the community to what's being recommended and decide if it's right or not. It is not for us, and that's my opinion in terms of our online platform. We don't use that to tell you your job. We use that, if you want us to, to help you do your job. And so if it had been proposed to me that we would engage in this sort of activity, I would have come to you and said, do you want to do a survey to collect the opinions around the project and the bridge to inform you? If you didn't feel that you needed that or wanted that, then we wouldn't have gone ahead, of course. But I don't see that as a stat, sorry. And I'm, I'm just saying, I don't see that as my role to decide how you gather information from the public.
Thank you. Okay. My second concern with that first point around, you know, polling Yarmouth, I guess, is that, I'm going to try to be diplomatic, but it's not going to be. Is that we have been doing everything we can, especially given COVID and the mental stresses and the physical stresses on people to move forward with getting 275 Main Street open because it's so important to this entire region. And again, because of, not just because of COVID, but COVID just puts it over the top. And it has been held back largely in part under the guise of process and following process, which this just completely erased. I guess that's how I would phrase that. That none of this came to the Mariner Center Expansion Committee or to a Bridge Committee or anything like that. And so process was just eliminated in this case. Go ahead, anytime you want to speak, speak. I can, if I'm wrong, tell me.
I don't want to speak too much, but to that point, that was part of the terms of reference that the three councils adopted and this council, our previous council adopted entering into this process. There was several parts of the terms of reference that referenced communications and engagement with the public and to be brought through the, through the expansion committee. So again, a bit of a, bit of a surprise that they would, given, given the emphasis on the process.
Thank you. Counselor Hatfield?
Yeah, I'd like you, I'll try to be professional in my response. But I think for me, it was, we have tried our best to be transparent to the public, to follow the process, to engage our partners and to do what the citizens have told us they wanted back in October. So to put this survey out now, when people are already having, working on committees, working on moving things forward, it seems like it's putting the cart after the horse or the cart before the horse, however you say it. This should have been done a long time ago. We've got, the decision has already been made to go forward with the bridge and with the Mariner Center. And so to come back and ask people now, what do you want, is really, I think demeaning to the citizens. You know, this should have been done before if they had wanted to do that. And for this council, who has worked really diligently to be transparent and professional about getting these two entities set up, it makes us look like we haven't been transparent or professional. It just makes us look terrible to the public when we actually had no idea that this was happening. And people are calling and saying, well, do you not want the bridge? Do you not want this? I thought you wanted this. And we're saying, you know, we've been blinded by this. So I think it was really unfair to, to the councils, to the two other partnering councils and certainly to all the people. And certainly the folks in our town who received, who got the call about this, which really confused, confused people and upset people. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dares?
Yeah, I found that when I read the, some of the questions today, I don't even know how I'd answer those on the phone call. There was so much information, I looked at one questionnaire, there was so much information provided or so many options provided that you'd have to read them to me three times before I could make a choice. I'm just wondering, my, the information I have is that this was not a council sanctioned set of circumstances.
Yeah, that's for the other discussion.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted that clarified, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, well, yes, so we'll have that, we'll have that discussion. Yeah, yeah. Well, yes. So we'll, we'll have that, we'll have that discussion otherwise. We did watch the meetings. We didn't see any meetings, right? Like, we tape all our meetings.
Mm-hmm.
So we didn't see any of this discussion in a meeting. So that's probably.
So I guess my comment there is that I'm, I'm, I'm not taking a front from a decision of council, that's all I'm saying.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lesser?
Yeah, I guess a couple of questions that.
We haven't even gotten to the questions yet.
I know. Are we going to go through question by question?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
I'm going to back out of this for a minute again until we get to questions.
Yeah, okay. All right. Your lights on, your lights on, Heather. Okay, so that, that part of that discussion was basically simply where they stated that they were going to poll all three municipal units, okay, which is wrong on every count. Okay, so the next part under the telephone introduction, I think we've all gone through that. And then we start with the questions on the next page, which are relatively simple. So anybody stop me on any of these questions? Do you live in or own property in any of the following municipalities? So they are, they are asking that question. If somebody said, yes, I live in the town, they should have just hung up, but apparently that didn't happen. How long have you been living? Okay. Do you identify as into which of the following categories? So there's age. Stop me anytime. Page three, these are the relatively simple ones. Okay, so B1, overall perceptions. How familiar are you with the planned expansion of the Mariner Center Recreation Facility in Yarmouth? So that is a, to me, that's a, just a general question. Anybody, everybody good on that question? I really need you to jump in. Go ahead, counselor.
So the, the first question there, I guess is S, S1A. Do you own property in any of the following, or live and own any property in any of the following? I'm not really, I don't have the second question, S1B. How long have you been living in the county of Yarmouth? Like, what would happen if you said at, at that point that you lived in Argyle or town of Yarmouth? Like, I don't, how do you, how do you answer question S1B at that point? Because it seems like, it seems like at one point, this was a survey for the county of Yarmouth, which one, S1B states.
Well, okay, so here's, town of Yarmouth, Argyle, and municipality all live in the county of, are all of Yarmouth County, as opposed to the municipality of the district of Yarmouth. Does that make sense to you? We're all in Yarmouth County. Oh, did you? Are you good? Okay. All right. So the next question, B2, Mariner Center Plan Expansion Project will include an aquatics, fitness, multipurpose, expanded common areas. It may also include indoor walking track. To what extent do you support or oppose this project? Go ahead, C A O.
Your worship, I'm, I'm just realizing that I don't think that this survey is exactly what was delivered because I'm quite certain, almost a hundred percent, that when the survey was actually conducted, it referred to a two-lane indoor walking track. So the person making a call randomly wouldn't insert that. So it tells me that this is not necessarily the final version of the question. So I just offer that.
Wow. You asked for the questions, right? Did you not ask for the survey questions? Then we hope this is them. If they're not, you've got another issue. Okay. All right. So does anyone have, are we good with that one?
Your worship.
Yeah?
Just, sorry. So the elements that are generally identified there is the aquatic center, the fitness gym, the multipurpose space, and the expanded common areas. Those are the things that are still on our, on our priorities for the project.
Yes.
The building program has not been finalized. There's still some work to do there.
Yes.
And I guess from a, from an expectations management, and it doesn't get into great detail, but I, I do say with almost a hundred percent certainty that there was a very specific reference to a two-lane walking track in the survey. That, that, that kind of builds an expectation with the public. I, I had a comment from somebody who said, you know, I, I heard there was going to be a track. I didn't know it was just going to be a two-lane walking track. So in the wording of, of this, it, it does affect people's understanding of the project and expectations.
Yes.
And, and where no program has been finalized, just making that point.
That's a, it's a very good point. Counselor Dairs?
Yeah, the reference to the two-lane walking track is in the questions. It's, it's in question B5. The rotate, that's a list, a list of amenities. So it is there. It is included. So it's quite likely that this is in fact the accurate questionnaire. My comment is I thought we were past all this.
Yeah. Okay, good. Okay, so B3, currently Mariner Center Plan Expansion Project is a partnership between town of Yarmouth, municipality of Argyle, municipality of district of Yarmouth. If one of these three partners backed out, resulting in increased cost and risk for the remaining partners, would you still support this project? Now, I don't even. Deputy Mayor, go first and then Heather.
I, I have a problem wanting to say things and not being able to say them. So here's my deal on all the questions. These are questions that shouldn't be asked to people that they shouldn't have been asking them to. So we can go through them one by one, but at the end of the day, we weren't contacted. This is disrespectful.
Thank you, Deputy. Go ahead, counselor.
Yeah, exactly. My words, exactly. This is really very disrespectful and it's indicating that somebody is, one of the partners is talking about backing out is what they're indicating and leading people to, to think that, right? So that's the word on, on the street now. It's certainly disrespectful to the partners involved.
Counselor Lesser?
Yeah, I guess I'm just echoing the same. It, I mean, it probably should have been worded if the municipality of Yarmouth backs out because it's like, we're not backing out of it. We bought, we bought the building, the Y, and we're moving ahead with this project. It just, if we're not talking about backing out of it, to me, it's quite disrespectful to have our name associated with that question as opposed to asking for their own sake if we were to back out. Yeah, that's, that's it on that.
Thank you. Okay, so, so basically on that one, it's very leading. Our name shouldn't have been in there because we're not backing out. We're here and we just want to get this done. Okay, so the next one, we'll go through, I mean, if, if the increased cost resulted in an increase of taxes or funds available for other community programs and projects, would you still support this project? Nothing's free. So I, I don't, I, I just don't, I don't understand this question because nothing is free. And we've said before, if we have to up the taxes, we will. If we don't have to, we won't. But it's a multi-million dollar project. And, yeah, what is it? For other community programs and projects. So if, if you live, for example, in town, I mean, we, everything we do, we do for everybody, including the entire region. So if you live in a smaller community in the outskirts, is that what they're asking? Like, will you not get a sidewalk or you won't get a, I don't know. It's a, I don't know what, you have any thoughts on that? But I'm going to give you a list of potential amenities for the Mariner Center Expansion Project. So rank them most important to least important. So I can start on this one. This is again with the Mariner Center Expansion Committee, where we make decisions. Certainly, we engage the public, but how did it get from a committee to a questionnaire to, that's, I guess that's the biggest question. Who decided that this was the list? I might have missed something. I don't know who decided that. I don't know if there's any comments on that one. I think we're all just kind of shaking our heads. A bridge project is being considered, being considered. Okay, there's my, you can write that down, Lindsay. First two words, that just shocked me. Involving renovating the existing aquatic center at 275 Main until the Mariner Center Expansion is complete. To what extent do you support or oppose investing tax dollars in 275 Main Street as an interim solution for providing access to an aquatic center in the Yarmouth area? Go ahead, C A O.
So Your Worship, there's, there's, the bridge project is not about renovating the former YMCA. It's about operating it. There, there is a report that talks about, the Maricor Report I'm going to refer to. It talks about anticipated capital costs to operate the facility for five years. And it puts the price tag at about $500,000. I think with diligence, diligent operation, it might be, might be less than that, but of course, it could always be a bit higher. But that is not a renovation that is dealing with deferred maintenance. And so I guess that's the point that I'm raising is that there is no plan to renovate the former Y. It's simply to operate it with minimal investment until there's an opportunity to move into an expansion at Mariner Center.
Okay. So that one's leading as well. Go ahead, Counselor Dairs?
So on that note, in the next question, they're asking if council should invest renovating existing aquatic, aquatic center at 275 Main Street. And one of the answers is more than a million dollars. Was there ever a price tag of more than a million dollars to renovate that facility?
Well, there was, there was a Maricor Report that looked at it through a 20-year lens and said to, to refurbish the systems and the building, you know, deal with all the issues. You could be looking at eight or nine million dollars. So if you wanted to spend over a million, you could do it.
Okay, what's, I guess, then let me rephrase that. Was there at, at any point, any intention to renovate the building at a cost of more than a million dollars?
No. I don't think so. I think the, the intention was always, so that first Maricor Report was commissioned by the YMCA. The municipal councils supported the cost of that because they were, they were without money. And that looked at it at a 20-year lifecycle. We went back as the town, we went back and asked them to shift the lens to a five-year because that's really what we were talking about as a bridge. So there was, if they had come back and said for five years even, you need a million dollars, then, then I would say that's realistically what we would have been talking about, but they, they came back with, with half a million dollars.
Okay, so I guess that's my point. I find that, that information misleading?
Yeah, it is.
Anyway, thank you.
It is. Any, any, you good on that one? Okay. So seven, if the interim solution to funding and renovation of the existing aquatics would mean delaying the Mariner Center Expansion Project two to four years at an additional cost of 400, to what extent would you support or oppose it? Counselor Lesser?
So I guess I don't know, and I know it goes into the next question as well. They're just upping the numbers, but I don't, like, I don't know where the numbers have come from. It says two to four years delay and at a cost of 400,000. I'm assuming the additional cost of 400,000 is based on 7B, but that seven, or sorry, B7B. They had a choice there how much they were willing to spend, but then they narrowed it down to 400,000, I think, in the next question, if I understand it right. The questions are confusing to begin with. But I, I just don't get where they're, like, is there talk that if we do this, that there's going to be a delay of two to four years or four to six years?
No.
Or is that just a fear mongering type of campaign?
I would suggest the latter, just a guess. That's the latter. But we were advised by T I R that what we do on Main Street does not affect what we do. Is that not true, C A O?
Sorry, Your Worship. Yes, we, so we, council had a meeting with senior officials, including the deputy minister, T I R, in the winter. And that very specific question was raised because we knew it was a concern that at least the district of Yarmouth had, had shared that if we, if we spend money or we, well, if we operate 275 Main Street, it could delay the expansion project. So we asked that question very clearly because ultimately, any federal provincial funding that we receive, T I R has a, has a, has a very significant role in, in supporting that to cabinet and, and ultimately our, our success. So we wanted to be sure, right? We all wanted to be sure that if we were going to do something, that we didn't, we didn't hurt, hurt ourselves on the other hand. And it was, it was very clear, and I know the other councils, at least I, I shouldn't say I know, I wasn't there, but I'm, I'm led to believe the other councils also had that discussion. So I don't know why there would be a delay because it wouldn't be related to the federal provincial funding.
It absolutely would not. And we were, we were clearly advised that. But you know what? If you're a member of the public and you don't understand that, you know, there isn't going to be a delay. The, the problem is not the delay in 275 Main Street getting to the Mariner Center. The delay problem is in getting to 275 Main Street while the people suffer, quite frankly. I'm just, the, the last one before we move on, we're on the top of page six. Thinking about the plan to renovating the existing aquatic center as an interim solution to the Mariner Center Expansion, which of the following statements do you most agree with? I'd rather time and money be focused on completing the Mariner Center Expansion on time, but it doesn't say it'll take five, six, seven, eight years. Doesn't say that. I'd rather time and money be focused on renovating 275 Main Street, even if it means more investment and a delay of the Mariner Center Expansion by one or two years. So I think we skipped a step. We didn't ask, I would rather time and money be focused on renovating 275 Main. Statement through, when I say we, I don't mean we. I'd rather time and money be focused on renovating 275 Main, even if it means more investment and the delay of the Mariner Center by three or four years, which is not, the Mariner Center is five or seven years out anyway. I'd rather time and money only be put towards renovating 275 Main and not proceed with the Mariner Center Expansion. I mean, come on. Okay. Counselor Lesser and then C A O. Go ahead. You can go ahead, Jeff.
You might say something that might prevent me from saying something. You go ahead.
No, I, Your Worship, you didn't read the question fully.
Didn't I? I didn't? I was probably too upset.
I don't think so. Did you say in statement number two, 2024? Did you say that?
No, I actually didn't because who would put 2024 as an option?
So, well, that, that's the delay. So what they're saying is it would be delayed until 2024 in that statement, right? That's, just saying.
So is this saying that they think we're going to be, the Mariner Center Expansion will be built in 2024?
2022 or 2023. That's the delay of 2024. I would have liked to have seen a statement five saying, I support both. And that question was just conveniently missed. But yeah, the, the misleading part of statement two and three with the 2024 and 2026, not understanding what that means, to me, if I was a member of the general public, knowing what happened after the election and people asking us, how come the Y's not open after our first meeting? I was asking myself the same question. I didn't realize, you know, I guess I did realize, but, you know, things take time. And people thought we could get the Y open right away. So to me, that question sounds like, you know, we can have the Mariner Center, if you go with question two, we can have it done and ready for 2024 or question three by 2026. And I'm wondering if that's what that actually means, or if it means that we would start the planning of it in 2024 or 2025. or if it means that we would start the planning of it in 2024 or 2026. But it just lacks any clarity, like, I, I've done a lot of work and research, taking a lot of courses in it. And like, I guess if, I'm, I guess we'll talk about it after, but I'd be curious to find out who wrote the questions and if they were, if they were looked for, if the questions were looked over for bias. There's a lot, when you're surveying people, there's a lot of factors that go into it. And there's, it didn't, none of those factors seem to fit into this.
Thank you. We have an engineer here. Do we want our engineer to come up and maybe have a word?
Your worship, I want to offer that at this point. You know, you're having a public meeting, you're talking around timelines. And that is one of the concerns with this question is that it sets expectations for people, the public, around timelines for Mariner Center Expansion. And you know, Mark Brophy, our engineer, has years of experience with federal government, doing over $200 billion in federal projects, delivering them on budget on time. So maybe he could speak to, with based on his knowledge of where we are and the complexity of this project, maybe what a realistic timeline would be for getting the project done and the doors open.
Mark, are you okay to do that?
Love to. So timelines? Project in the $30 million range? After you've got approval and understand what your scope is, a year to design, two to build, if everything goes right. After you know what you're building and you have a project ready to go.
I think it's taken us two or three years just to get this far and we still don't know what we're building. So we're five years out.
At the pace, yeah.
Yeah, right? Thank you. Okay, folks. You know, talking about timelines, I'm just going to read something that I saw today. We probably all saw it. It was something somebody posted. And it really hit me to the core, and I know Gil, it's going to hit you too. But somebody said this today. It took over 40 years of fighting conflicts, lawsuits, and potential bankruptcies, and a massive multi-year public fundraising campaign, and ultimately lots of compromise to build the Mariner Center. Here's a question that should have been asked on the survey. How long is acceptable to you for Yarmouth County residents to be without a publicly-supported wellness and aquatic center? One year, five year, 10 years, or 40 years? I'm sorry, but I'm really upset right now because our people are suffering and it looks like we can't get our act together. And I think we would sign on every dotted line right now. And the games just have to stop. This is just way beyond anything I've ever imagined in my time. So, sorry, but I'm really upset right now. So I think that's the end of the, is that the end of the agenda? Go ahead, Counselor Lesser.
I just want to say as well, because I think Counselor Daers said it. I've talked to some of the counselors in the municipality and we have some good partners with some of the counselors in that municipality. And the frustration that I have is not towards those counselors because I don't believe they had a lot of say in what happened here. And in talking to, you know, talking to those counselors, I don't, I'm not putting blame on them for this. But it's frustrating to see that this did go out with or without their knowledge. And I'm thinking it's probably without.
I'll tell you what would, yeah. Something like that wouldn't want to go out without my, everyone at council, knowing every question, but that's another discussion. Okay, so I'm looking right now for a motion to go in camera.